Hey, everybody. Welcome back to another edition of the Curlin Community Connection. I am delighted to once again say that all politics are local and our month of June has been dedicated to the Scottsdale elections. Mondays are for mayors and the other days are for our city council candidates. And as part of this current environment, our campaign is trying to drop a little knowledge on everybody as their home. We think voting is important. We think informed voting is very important. So the dates were chosen as a first come, first served basis. This is not a debate. The format is a free flowing conversation. I ask that my guests don't attack the other people that are running because they are not here and just try to promote yourself. I will try to be fair as possible, cover all types of issues in the conversation wherever they may lead us. I'll try to ask some of the same questions of each of our guests. In other words, Ms. Tammy Caputi, let's have no crying today, okay? No crying.
Not crying. Definitely not crying. I have to tell you, today is a very special day in our house. My youngest daughter is 10 years old.
Oh.
Lots of singing and laughing, but definitely no crying.
Mazel tov.
Thank you.
Okay, so, well, I just said Tammy Caputi. Tammy Caputi, right here in front of us, she was the House candidate in LD 23 in 2016. Now in 2020, she's running for city council. She hails from the East Coast, has a degree in economics from Wesley.
Wesley.
Wesley? Wellesley. Wellesley. I think we have one too many Ls in there. Can we do something about that, Tammy?
I'll work on it.
We'll work on that. We'll work on that at the break, okay?
Yeah.
And she also has an MBA from Simmons in Boston. She's married to her husband Steve. They have three kids. One of them is 10 today. And she is co-owner of a business called Yale Electric. Is that correct?
No, I'm the sole owner. No co-owner.
Sorry, sole owner. Boy, I really ought to do better with my information.
Geez, where did you get this stuff?
How about this?
I had to work my butt off for this business. Don't give away half of it for me.
I'm so sorry. Hey, so, so the way we work this, Ms. Tammy Caputi, is that we ask questions of you. We try to give some space for conversation. We try to ask our viewers at home if they would put in their comments and questions into the Facebook feed. Then by the magic of my campaign manager, Andy Gomez, we got it here to the Zoom. We try to answer it and we try to solve the world's problems.
I love it.
What could help, though, what could really help is those people at home asking questions, put a question mark in front first so that kind of Andy can kind of see it. Pull it out, put it in the pipeline to get answered, okay? Are we ready to proceed?
I'm ready.
All right. Full disclosure, Tammy Caputi's husband, let me get the name right so he doesn't kill me, Steve. Steve and I were both born in Massapequa, New York, which is a little hamlet there on Long Island, so no special thing. And Tammy, being on this program, we don't endorse each other's candidate. This is just about information. I am also running for the State House in District 23, and this is not that. This is about information for the people. So what do you say we get to it? All right.
I'm in.
Tammy Caputi, what qualifies you for the city council? Tell me.
I love that question because we're getting that in the form tomorrow, so it's a good warm up for me.
Oh.
I'm a 20-year, yeah, I'm a 20-year homeowner, parent, and business owner here in Scottsdale. I just finished a three-year term on the Development Review Board overseeing the quality of development in our city, which I feel passionately about. I have a bachelor's in economics, as you've mentioned, and a master's in business administration. I've been running my own successful business here in Scottsdale for the last 20 years. I oversee very large projects and I make sure that they're on time and in budget. I work in an industry that experiences regular cyclical downturns of the sort that we're experiencing right now. And I understand the need to be diversified and to pivot to new opportunities. I'm going to close that with, I, as a business owner, understand the importance of the 18,000 businesses that make up our city and the fact that we need those businesses in order to maintain our quality of life here and our low property taxes. How was that? Am I qualified?
I am not in a position to make qualified judgments. I have already said, Tammy Caputi, I'm just here to ask questions, try to normalize this whole process. And again, people at home can ask questions as well. Okay. What issue is it that you're most passionate about right now?
My issue of passion is the future of our city. And to me, that means economic vitality, having a diverse and resilient economy, quality development with public benefits, and collaboration between our city and our schools so that our children can have quality jobs from hire to retire. I'm all about the future.
Hire to retire. I love that.
Don't you? I got that from someone in the school community, but I can't share.
Actually, it was from me.
Was it from you?
Yes, it was from me.
Did it originate with you? That's amazing.
Yes, and then it went through HR and everything. That was when I was...
You're so good.
I was...
I was a fellow with the Flynn Brown Foundation as well, the Civic Leadership Foundation this last year, and that's a term they use all the time, so maybe they got it from you.
Yeah, and now they kind of delved into trying to weave it into work, play, educate, and retire kind of stuff.
I love it. Those are all great things.
You know, I don't need much. Just give me a statue. That's it. Just a statue, I'll be good.
I have three children here in Scottsdale, and I am very passionate about making sure that we have a city where they can go to school and find good jobs as well. I'm always looking at the future. It's not just about us, it's about the next generation. Is the city going to work for them? So that really is my passion.
Fantastic. What do you, what do you, we'll come back to the schools in a moment. What do you see as the greatest strength that Scottsdale has right now? I love living in Scottsdale. I've lived here for 30 years. You know, my choice.
Yeah, me too. I came out here, you know, 20-plus years ago on a whim, absolutely fell in love with it, and have been here ever since. So I hear you. I think that the winning formula for our city is that we have high amenities, strong property values, and low property taxes. I don't think I can say that enough times. That is our winning formula, and not many other cities have managed to do that. So we need to maintain that formula in any way that we can. We are not just a bedroom community here in Scottsdale, even though we are a beautiful place where people love to come and retire and hang out, but we are also an economic hub, and we need to not lose sight of that. The reason that that balance works is because we can generate, we generate great revenues through our business community, and that allows us to maintain our beautiful preserve and our open spaces and our green areas. It's a balance. You can't have one without the other. And Scottsdale works. We're a very well-run city. We've gotten awards for it, and when something works, you stick with it.
Yeah, I get that. You know, I'm going to push, I mean, here we are in Scottsdale, and this is just me.
Yeah.
We have this revolving thing going on, right? So we've got the great name of Scottsdale, which has brought in wonderful residents who are looking for this quality of life, who have sustained this great name of Scottsdale, who have built great businesses here that have brought more people here. I mean, we got this wheel that's going, but we can't always be, we can't be sure that the wheel's going to run. We have to always continuously improve. So give me something that we need to improve upon right now in Scottsdale. Let's peel back the onion a little bit, okay?
Sure. I mean, number one, right now in the COVID crisis, we've got to diversify our economy. We've been talking about it since the 1970s. I could go back and read article after article after article to you about people giving this opinion, and we've done a great job. We're moving in that direction, but we are still too tourist dependent. Not to say that tourism isn't super important. It is. We're a beautiful destination. We always will be. And in fact, we're probably even more of a tourist destination now. I mean, where would you want to be in the middle of a global pandemic than a place that has wide open spaces and the ability to be spread out? But we can't be in all tourism, right? So we've absolutely got to diversify. We have 200 software companies here in Scottsdale. We've got 30,000 people employed in the healthcare industry. We don't have much of a higher ed industry at all, which is something to consider. But again, in this COVID environment, who are the people that are doing okay? It's mostly knowledge workers who haven't really suffered. The sufferers are the workers in our tourism industry, in the restaurants, in the bars, in the hotels. We have to make sure that our economy is diversified so that we're not so vulnerable during these downturns. That's what we need to do better.
I think the state of Arizona is extremely vulnerable, much more so than the hamlet that we call home, Scottsdale.
Agreed.
90% of our portfolio of revenues comes from sales tax and personal income tax. So when you, when you combine that...
It's 47%.
Not in Scottsdale, in the state.
Okay, gotcha.
But when you combine that with the fact that we are now, you know, pretty much as a state, a low-wage workforce because of where we are in the service industries.
Yep.
So, so let's talk about it, because we've had COVID. You know, we've had all these things that have shut this economy down by no fault of anybody who's trying to build a business.
Yep.
But, you know, how do we go about balancing or diversifying, as you say? How does that happen?
I can give you an example from my own business, which I keep using, right? So I am a materials, an electrical materials supplier for construction projects. I work with electricians. And if I were focused just on, let's say, restaurants or, again, hotels, which is usually a pretty good part of my business, I would really be in a bad place right now. But in a situation like this, where the economy is tanking in those industries, I'm able to pivot, and I have a huge amount of work going on right now with hospitals, a lot of infrastructure work on the freeways, that part of the business picks back up for me when other parts go down, right? So I'm able to smooth it out quite nicely. I think that the city needs to be in that same situation. What did I say that made you smile?
No, I love it, man. You're hedging. That's what it is. You hedge your portfolio.
Exactly. And I mean, I'm able to do that as a business owner, right? And so we need to really elevate that type of thinking as a city. There have to be ways in which we could hedge the areas where we collect taxes from, revenues, right? I mean, it seems like a very simple no-brainer. We've got to keep moving in that direction.
Well, first of all, revenues are not our enemy, and government is not the enemy, right?
Do I say revenues were enemy? We need revenues.
You didn't say that. No, no, no. But I'm saying that there are people out there that everything is, you know, what do you, what do you do in an economic upturn? You cut taxes. What do you do in an economic downturn? You cut taxes. What do you do for dinner? You cut taxes. There are people that just, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay? So let me just reintroduce you again, because we have people that just joined us. We're talking to the one and only Tammy Caputi. She's running for one of nine spots, well, actually, one of three spots between nine people for the Scottsdale City Council. Tammy, real quick, what's your website? So if people want to get more information, they can go.
It's tammycaputi.com. It doesn't get any simpler.
One T and one P in Caputi, all right? If you put in an extra P, you don't know where you're going to go.
Do you see my name? I'm wearing it for you.
Tammycaputi.com. We'll have Andy put that into the feed. And remember to ask questions if you have them, okay? What's, what's, here's, here's one. Okay, what are your top two targets of issues you'd like to take on once you are elected?
Well, I think I already touched upon that, right? I'm all about the future. A couple of things that I would like to take a look at would be for sure. I think we need to have a conversation about attainable housing. Hold that thought for a minute.
Yes.
It starts trendy, but I absolutely think that we need to push forward with the update to the general plan. So I think if I had to pick two, to be a little different from what everyone else will say, maybe, I'll stick with those.
You'll be you.
I have so many things I want to do. This is the problem with progressives. I have a giant, long laundry list of things, but, you know, I can't, it's not going to be me all by myself diversifying the economy, although I would like to lead in that direction. So I would like there to be more collaboration between the schools and the cities, as you know. I definitely want to have a conversation about attainable housing, and I would like to move forward with the general plan.
Well, we have a lot of questions coming up then, because right in this dark little skull of mine, I've got a ton. So let me ask you this, because we do have quite a split, not just across the country, but within our little council. Started with, I mean, I don't, who knows where it started, but it really bubbled up during the 420 thing. And now we have these divergent camps, it seems. But just as you said, legislating is a team sport. You have, you have to get other people onto your ideas. So how do you work with some really divergent views in this diverse community? How do you bring people together, which I think is really important? I think you do as well.
I do. You know that I do. And actually, I think there's two, so I have two great examples. So first of all, we did just pass a historic bond and school override in this past couple of months, and nobody thought that that could happen. That was coming right off of a very divisive city, and everybody was talking about exactly what you're saying, that people are on opposite sides. But I know with the bond committee, I didn't sit on it myself, but I had a lot of friends on it, and the strategy was to reach out across the community and bring together voices that wouldn't normally sit at the same table and make sure that, you know, given, here's your task, let's all kind of get to the table and make sure that everyone's voice is heard, and then bring it back out to the community and make sure that it's appropriately explained. And look what happened. It was a slam dunk. It was an overwhelming passage of that, of that bond package, because we made sure that people of many different views and from all the different parts of the city were at the table. And I think when you make, when you give people that opportunity to feel that they've been heard, it solves a lot of problems. I'm the chair of an organization called SCOT, Scottsdale Coalition of Today and Tomorrow, and we've been using that same model, inviting people into our group who have views that might not necessarily be in our echo chamber, and making sure that they all get heard and that they bring, you know, richness and value to the conversation. And then we bring them back out to the community. And I think that model, we just have to keep using that model. And I know you want to cut me off, but I'm going to give you another example. I sat on the Development Review Board...
Tammy Caputi, you don't talk for me. I talk for you.
I sat on the Development Review Board for the last three years, as I mentioned. And I know that the projects that were much more successful were the ones where we took a great deal of time to go out into the community, to speak with the neighborhood groups, to get the developers and the neighbors and the members of the Development Review Board all at the same table, literally, talking about the project, making improvements, you know, pushing the projects forward and making them better. And, and I feel like every time we did that, we did end up with a much better project, and people were pretty happy overall. I mean, you can't, not, everybody's not going to win everything, as you know, but if everybody walks away feeling like they at least got something, then it's, then it's a win. And we need to restore that feeling on our council. I couldn't agree more. There shouldn't be factions. You can have seven people with seven different opinions, but we should all be working together towards the same goal, which is making a fantastic, great, positive, forward-thinking city.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more. And that transcends lots of decision-making bodies. Back in 2006, when I became president of the Teachers Association, I worked with one of my favorite superintendents, Dr. John Berisi. I don't know if you remember him. But he was a real, he was a real statesman, and most of everything I've learned about leadership, I think, quality leadership, really came through him. And he would say, you know, you have to go slow to go fast. And he would talk about how everybody has an equal voice at this table. And there'll be some times when there are decisions to be made in this organization, and he would say, I have to do those. And I hope you'll trust that I have to do it because I am X, Y, and Z. This is the ship. You are going to help me row, you are going to help me go in that direction, but there'll be times when I have to say, we have to avoid the rock, and we have to make the decision.
That's the worst.
Yeah. So let's get into schools, because you talked a little bit about it. You've touched on it a lot with the high property values. It's really because of our excellent public education that we have here in Scottsdale. We've got quite a few school districts that touch Scottsdale. As a retired teacher, I spent over 20 years here. I understand that the impact of a well-rated school has on a community. While the city of Scottsdale neither manages nor do they set the funding for schools, in the past, we've actually enjoyed some mutually beneficial relationships.
Yep.
So talk to me about some ideas you have about furthering those relationships or reigniting some of them. How do we get together and make a better city for your kids?
Well, I'm going to start the conversation with the sentence I usually use at the end, because it feels right. I think that the only thing limiting us from having better connectivity between our schools and our cities is our own limited imagination, honestly. I mean, I keep hearing this from people, a comment you made about, oh, the cities and the schools, they're not the same, you can't get them together. I just think that's a very limiting way of thinking. There's so many areas where we can get together and do great things. I mean, if we were to join resources and ideas, first of all, of course, restart the subcommittee, the education subcommittee, so that you're having regular reports from the education community before the city council, as you pointed out. I mean, when you speak with Ralph Malar from the Economic Development Department of Scottsdale, he'll tell you that the first thing that businesses look for when they locate in a city, it's the quality of the schools. So to say that there's no connectivity is absolutely ridiculous. Of course, people are looking, looking at that. It's a direct impact on our property values. We need to be getting together, sharing ideas, sharing information, sharing resources. I mean, there's the low-hanging fruit, like sharing information on economic development, on land use, on demographics, you know? The information we get from census can be used by both city and schools. We have resource officers, we have parks, we have programs for kids that could be joint between cities and schools. And I think we also need to reach out and partner with facilities like the Scottsdale Community College as well, not just the elementary and high schools, right? There's so, I've spoken with a lot of business owners around Scottsdale who are very interested in starting programs where you could funnel, you know, join together and, and put together some programs that allow you to take the training that you would get in a Scottsdale Community College program and go right into an employment. I interviewed Ronan Avram from the Hotel Valley Ho about a week ago, and he's trying to get together a program where they use culinary arts students from SCC, and then they funnel them right into the hotel, kind of, you know, in a seamless transition of training them and then, and then give them a place to find employment. That's beautiful. And that goes back to our hire-to-retire, right? I mean, you've got this nice pipeline where you're training, you're finding, you're finding a job, you're becoming a person who contributes back to the community. That's cool. I love that.
Okay, so I am running for the House of Representatives here for District 23. And one of the things that I used to do as a teacher was I created this credit recovery program. And so we had a lot of kids that were going to fail out of high school, but they were able to go through credit recovery and get the needs that, to graduate. But they couldn't go to a four-year university because the credit recovery classes didn't transfer over into that kind of a program. So they would go invariably to Scottsdale Community College, and some of them would get scholarships to go play football. Well, the state legislature zeroed out the budget for community colleges. That in then turned to them canceling football programs, which were the lifelines for these kids that just didn't mature on time. We are too often just killing the seed corn. And so for you to talk about the community colleges, I think, is wonderful. And here's something from my viewing public, who knows I love food. I actually interviewed the president of Scottsdale Community College, Chris, I think her last name's Baker. Baker? Anyway, so we went over to the culinary hall that they have over there at the end of May, and here's, here's where the tip is. If you want to eat at the Scottsdale restaurant at SCC, go at the end of May, the last week of school, because they have to cook everything that's in the refrigerator and freezers. And so they had this spread, this buffet for like 12 bucks. I didn't pay, she picked up the tab. But it was stupendous. These kids are so talented, and they would run the whole dining hall. I mean, it's just unbelievable. So, to you people at home, I know I talked around in circles a little bit there, go to SCC at the end of May, get yourself a nice buffet.
Eric, I love the fact that you also kind of pointed out that the legislature and the council also have things in which they could be collaborating on. I mean, I hear you 100%. And, you know, you and I could talk for hours about the different issues that we share and that we could be helpful to each other.
Yeah, so the question I set, I think, is this vertical articulation between council, state legislature, you know, what do you need from me when I'm sitting over there in the big house?
Well, I know, like, I was on an interview a couple weeks back with Scottsdale Living, and one of the questions that came up was about Airbnb. And that was kind of interesting, because we were talking about how the legislature...
I got a good intro for that, baby. I got a good intro. Let me stick it to them. Let me stick it to them. In 2016, our, our guys who were supposed to represent local control went over there at the legislature, Kevin O'Lawrence, and said, you know what, guys? We're going to take away all local control, Airbnbs. How about it?
I know.
Tell me what you would do about that.
Oh, God. I mean, I don't want to get in the weeds on the Airbnb, and of course, but, you know, there has to be local control, and that is an area where the legislature and the, and the cities can be partnering, of course, right? And that's just, that's low-hanging fruit. Of course, now with COVID, Airbnb has a new rule that you can't have party houses, which might solve some of that problem. Scottsdale's done a pretty good job. They have a good reporting system for issues. And, you know, there's this fine balance, of course, between private property rights and the rights of the neighbors to not be irritated and, you know, have, have party houses in their neighborhood. But, but yeah, I mean, there's so many opportunities to partner between cities and the legislature.
Yeah, and Tammy Caputi, here's the thing.
Yeah.
In Scottsdale, very different than somebody in Safford, right? Tucson is different from Flagstaff. We got all these different places in Arizona, this beautiful state. We elect people to serve our local needs. You know about the neighbor down the block and what they need. So while you say there are many sides to this issue, that's true, but you know the different sides here in Scottsdale.
Oh, there's no sides to that part of the issue. I'm 100% in favor of local control. Right? I'm with you. I mean, there's, there's a fine line between the rights of the property owner versus the rights of the neighbors, but there's, but I'm 100% aligned with you in terms of local control.
Yeah, no, that's what I was talking about. You know, the neighbor that says, hey, I bought this...
A good progressive.
All right. Tammy Caputi, we've got four minutes left. I'm going to ask you some questions that will try to put you into a different light. First of all, you were like a total elite training person, right? So you...
Yeah, I ran the Boston Marathon two times.
Right. Do you do triathlons?
I can't swim.
Oh, okay.
I'm a great cyclist.
You know why you sink? Muscle weighs more than fat. Would you show us the guns?
This might be true.
Show us the guns. Bam!
Yeah?
Wow!
I've been lifting weights since I was in college. Small and mighty.
Yeah, that's really funny. Okay, I'm going to try to ask you some questions. Spoiler alert, Tammy is actually a fitness nut in the case that she is a vegetarian. So my question about where do you get pizza, where do you get a burger, might not go over so well, but I'm going to ask them anyway. Okay, Tammy, do you drink?
I don't.
You don't? So I can't ask you if you want a beer?
I don't drink at all. And it's not for moral reasons or whatever. I just, I'm 100 pounds. I cannot handle alcohol at all.
I got you.[1671.54]
But I'm fun without it.
Okay. Do you eat pizza?
I do not, because I'm a vegetarian and there's no dairy.
All right. Wow.
I know. No, maybe I'm not fun after all.
Where? Geez, it's hot in here. What's the best place for a hike for you in Scottsdale?
You know, I can be on the backside of Pinnacle Peak Trailhead in one and a half miles from my front door. So I like to run it from my front door to the trailhead. And so I run from the backside to the front side. And then when I go back from the front to the end, the whole way, people say to me, oh, my God, you're doing it twice.